We'll talk to Ashley.
I have been given her hand.
You'll have to wait till next year.
We'll just take, we'll just take.
No, you're not gonna take anything.
We'll take the cash payment.
There you go.
Can we not?
I gotta make a senior graduation.
We all got something to graduate.
That's what we'll do. We'll just take your graduation. That's my property.
We will leave you tomorrow after Mr. Thomas.
You can ahead and get started. I'm gonna step outside and make sure everybody's looking. But it's all looking great.
Okay. All right. So it's five oh two and I'll call this meeting in order. All right, we're gonna begin with the pledge. Mr. Chapman, please.
Sir, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, no delegation. Okay, so we'll skip the first letter and we'll go to administrative council, Calhoun Gilmer Career Center report. Dr. Barr?
I'll jump in on that. Sure. Uh, so let's see, just a couple of things to get in on with the leaving of Kelly Whittle. She's retiring, I believe. Um, they, we needed to elect a new, um, chair for the administrative council of the Calhoun Gilmer Career Center. And that new chair is Dr. Tony Mini. Um, he will be the new chair of the Gilmer, or the Calhoun Gilmer Career Center along with his vice chair, Horace Motts from Calhoun County. Um, building updates, uh, let's see, the school board, uh, or school building authority, um, has allocated some funds for the career center to repair a roof that's ready to go. Um, and approved some monies for classroom renovations for the welding and the culinary departments. Um, we met assistant director, Kirianna Mini, and she told us about, um, her priorities, working on enrollment management and recruitment and working with principals on student re, uh, student transitions to the career center. Um, the camps that are going on out there are going along really well. They still have a few more. Uh, a bike camp, a drone camp, hunter safety camp, automotive camp. Uh, the only thing that they could use is more students. So I know that there's some advertisements out there on social media. If you come across those, if you wanna share those, or you know somebody that might, you know, be into a drone camp or hunter safety camp, give them this information, 'cause that's the one thing that can really help them out there is some more students. And I believe that's all I have. Anything else, Dr. Mini?
That was about it.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we move on to the consent agenda and start with the minutes. Move and reduce in front of your partner.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda in the minutes.
Second.
Oh.
Oh, no, okay. Uh, I missed one. Was it the tenth? Yeah, I wasn't there on the tenth, so. I'll go separate. I can do that.
Bert, do you wanna just roll out the motion?
Uh, yeah, go ahead. You got the tenth.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rescind mine, 'cause I don't think I was there on the tenth.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes for the July tenth meeting. Second.
Okay, then properly moved to second to approve July tenth regular reading minutes. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Abstain.
Okay, any abstention, any, okay, motion carries. All righty, we'll move on to July seventeenth special meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July seventeenth special meeting.
All righty, then properly moved to second to approve the July seventeenth special meeting minutes. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All righty, we'll move into new business and start with 3K contract with Head Start, Dr. Mini. Schedule report. Oh, oh, sorry, sorry. Under B, a treasure report, you have scheduled checks to be written. That's my fault.
Make a motion to approve the schedule of checks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, then properly moved in second to approve the schedule of checks to be written. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All right, now we're to new business back to 3K contract.
Um, just make, recommend making a motion to approve the 2023-24 contract with West Virginia Community Action for joint devastation in West Virginia 3K program. We have a call.
So.
Second. All right, it's been properly moved in second to accept the superintendent's recommendation about the 3K contract with Head Start. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, uh, Head Start, that's what used to happen out at the Rex Center, correct? Do they have a new facility? I hope that they found a new purpose with them.
I, I don't know what that, what, what their, what that building's capacity is now. Our, our students go to the Gilmer Elementary with the collaborative with Head Start still. But I don't know what the building is used for now. I'd have to look.
I think they have the extension office. Maybe they take the whole right side and the whole left side is just like a big multipurpose room. That used to be, yeah.
Yeah. But our folks are, our folks are in our building, yeah, but not in collaboration.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. We're going to B textbook adoption, Gilmer County High School.
That's just a recommendation for curriculum. It stated, uh, the curriculum is in the packet there. And you'll see, I don't know if you've checked that.
Now.
Sorry, if I find it. There it is. So this is for instructional materials, zoology, nine through twelve, McGraw-Hill. Human genetics, nine through twelve, McGraw-Hill. Introduction to personal finance, nine, twelve, Hooten, Mifflin Hardcore. Global geography, nine through twelve, Hooten, Mifflin Hardcore. Project Lead the Way Engineering, um, nine through twelve, and it's Project Lead the Way. And Project Lead the Way Design Model six through eight. And that's Project Lead the Way. All of those are recommendations for new curriculum that we've added this year that we do not have a current textbook for. Uh, I mean, just those people watching at home, or do we wanna discuss this? I have questions.
Go ahead.
Just I think anybody watching, you know, the whole curriculum. Does that fall, I mean, just we're talking about textbooks and stuff like that. Uh, I don't think it would tie into zoology, human genetics. You entered that, so it's covered. I understand, but I mean, this curious textbook might be. Those are all standard textbooks and they're all from the state approved textbook. All right, let's go.
Well, I did have a question, though. With curriculum and these books, is there any other committees that look at this? All this is coming from Shelley Mason, who were curriculum director. But as a board, you know, when we approve things, is there any chance that we could look at something like this in the future?
Most of the time, whenever we have curriculum adoptions, there is board participation in that. This would be classes that we added that we needed to adopt new curriculum for.
Right, and I remember approving those and the adding those classes.
Right.
As far as the textbook.
Part of it, if you wanna be a part of the adoption.
I just didn't know if in the past or if it's typical for board duty to look at them before they finalize. It's just, it's always difficult as a board to, you know, give final blessing on something that you didn't actually.
Is, um, usually there's like a faculty senate.
There was a team, high school teachers that, that chose the, most of, most of it is that these, these folks, when we added the additional time in the schedule, they added, they worked with the courses that they wanted to teach, like for example, zoology, and that teacher worked with picking out a textbook.
Family curriculum. I'd like to make a motion to approve the curriculum of state of the law. Tended schools, community approved textbooks, but state classes in Gilmer County schools.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. We won I Ready pilot.
This is just something, I put that single source, uh, letter in there. This is just something that I thought, uh, talking on skip that we should do is a formal motion and a board acceptance of the piloting of I Ready for the upcoming school year. We're all set with that. We just wanna make sure the board is aware that we are piloting their benchmark curriculum and it will provide new data to us and so on, so forth. So this is just, um, something that, uh, you know, we wanted to make sure that you're aware of. There is some associated costs for professional development, so you might have to be the ones that approve that if we need additional professional development, things like that. But other than that, it's, you guys have been well aware of I Ready and.
Yeah, was it, uh, was this on the one they were gonna provide for your period pilot?
So we've already completed the small pilot, um, in probably four or five different grade levels. Two at the elementary, two or three at the elementary, and two or three at the middle school. This is an expanded pilot now to more, more, um, grade levels in the county. So this is actually year two, and by the time we get I Ready, we'll have had a testament and we'll go in the third year.
We, we looked at those numbers in the spring.
Yeah. Right.
Apparently speaking to what we.
Yeah, and you guys, along the way, you guys have been aware. We've been showing you the stuff and all of that. But this is just a formalized, uh, we thought that that might be good just in case, you know, there was any question about what we're using, uh, work with curriculum associates, and they thought it'd be a good idea. So that's what, I just listed that on there for the upcoming year.
I want to make a motion to approve the I Ready pilot program with additional professional development for the 23, 24 school years, our benchmark assessment.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved in second. Is there any further discussion? We'll need I Ready pilot for board approval. Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All right, we move on to discussion due date of school handbooks.
So I don't know if you've got all of the school handbooks yet. I know that I think.
Still working on them.
Still working on the high school, so there's been a few days of work on that. My suggestion was to, um, have a due date of August second on those. Um, and then approve those at the August fourteenth, totally approve those at the August fourteenth, knowing that we're getting close to the deadline. There's been some work being completed on those. Then Tyson, Mr. Bryce, you've got pretty close on yours and really need the chance to send that to the printer. So I think you guys have had Mr. Bryce's for about a week.
Yes.
And, um, you know, so it, you know, there's a lot of work that's being done in those. Um, but I think that elementary's, um, is closer being ready.
Yeah, we met, um, Friday. I, they were probably there most of the day. I was there for a few hours. But just going through it line by line was. Yeah, 'cause it, a lot needed addressed. And it, it may not be even a hundred percent as we're talking, as we're going through the policies, whether we're gonna adopt countywide policies for certain things. So, you know, like Brandon says, it's, it's gonna be a little bit of a flux. We'll get the printed version out and then, as we made updates, we can just send home saying, well, parents, this replaces your current such and such section.
Could, could we by chance maybe like when, when you're gonna make like one of the changes? Like just, like if you could make like a highlight of the changes.
Yeah, it had, it had a lot of, it had a lot of language in it, like from policy itself that you could take. Now, it was really thick and complex, so.
And what we're trying to do is, is not restate policy. It's to tell students and parents what we expect, basically, in a normal, everyday language.
Right. Or, or, yeah. So, you know. I, I would like to have those by August second to you guys for everyone to review. That way, if there's an issue, we would have a few weeks to be able to rectify that. Because it means a lot for the board's buy-in on it. But you guys are ultimately gonna be the ones that support the schools, um, when there's an issue, so.
And I, I think, I think things will probably come up that we've missed or whatever. Because it's, I mean, you've seen handbooks, they're like that, and we're going, trying to go through line by line, and it's a big job.
It's kinda like the policy manual, but you visualize it.
But, you know, Brandon said, it's a flexible document, because we thought probably it's more important.
So I'm just making the recommendation that we have those due by the second. I'd like for, um, Mr. Price to be able to send his to the printer. I think you guys have had it a week. That way, uh, you know, if there's anything issues that we need to change, we'll move forward on that and then add that approval of those documents to the fourteenth.
So do you want to approve the elementarys today, or what?
I would wait, Bill, just in case there would be something we need to change. Have you gotten any comments back on the first Mr. Price?
I have, and I don't wanna push, you know, to make anybody, you know, go too quickly the most comfortable. The only reason, um, and I had talked to Dr. Mini, and I appreciate him bringing that up, we work with a company. So as an elementary student, you would have, we're native, and that's something that we use every day. You check it, homework, and behavior, you know, all the different things that we may have to, have to have. Well, that handbook goes in the very front of that plan.
School starts the sixteenth.
Yeah, and we work with a company called School Date Books, and we worked with them for a couple of years. And I can hold them off for a while. They gave us a, a quote already for the, the size of the.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with going ahead and correcting the elementary if I can get them.
Did, did, I did highlight, like Brett did request, I, I did highlight any of the changes that were involved. All of those changes involve, uh, faculty senate and the LSIC and our staff. Uh, so if you guys are curious about, you know, how these changes take place, if you've done work with them, and you guys wanna be a part of those, whatever your level of company is there, I welcome.
Do you all have any?
I'll be on site and ready, but so we're gonna do the deadline a little bit by the way.
I just know that we don't ever have any problems. Yeah, I buy that.
I had to approve the elementary and make a motion to do that.
Yeah, sure.
Get it, all right.
All right, motion made.
Second. And properly moved in second to approve the Gilmer County Elementary School handbook, um, for the upcoming school year. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstention?
Abstain.
Motion carries. So we move into, has a little business.
Is there a due date for the high school, or are we doing a motion?
Yeah, do we want a motion?
Make a motion that the high school handbook be finalized by August second and added to board education agenda on August fourteenth for board approval.
Would we? You'd have from the second to the fourth end, yeah.
No, I was waiting for the other one.
All right, so it's been properly moved in second to have the high school handbooks sent to the BOE by August second and then added to the board agenda on August fourteenth for board of education approval. Is there any further discussion to that made motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All right. We have a little business, and then do we need to go to personnel?
So I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session for a personnel issue. I move pursuant to six dash nine eight four two of the West Virginia code that the board go into executive session to discuss personnel and personnel matters, which have discussed in public might affect adversely the reputation of any person.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, then properly moved in second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. We're not going to executive session.
He shall return.
I'm off to work now.
Oh.
Grab a seat. See you, guys.
See ya.
Oh, gosh, we took such a long time to go work.
Another vacation planned, or are you running for school or something?
Yeah, I'm busy.
Unmuted.
Oh, good. How you liking OBS?
I do like, yeah.
It's good, I mean, you can just do anything on it.
I do like it. Yeah, if I ever have to move computers, I think it'll be lost, because I guess I'll just download it again.
Yeah, it shouldn't be that hard set up, I'm like.
And it'll be a different key than just plugging into YouTube.
It depends on how you have it set up. Like if you, like, do you have it in your settings where you have a, like, your account signed in on OBS?
I don't, I don't know those college kids that had fixed this up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Dr. Barr had those college kids come and set that up when we first started doing it.
Okay.
They're the ones that kinda showed us OBS.
From the broadcasting team up there? Or were they someone?
I think they were some of these.
Okay, yeah, well, if we get into body, I'm sure they can help again, or I can help get, if it happens again.
All right, go ahead.
I've got pretty good handle on OBS at this point.
Um, potentially, because, um, I think. One of those. I'm sorry.
Second.
We're probably moving to second when we rise to the effective session. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. All right, we are recommained in effective session. And we will start with professional section of personnel agenda, Dr. Manning.
I'd like to recommend Andrea Russell, second grade, Gilmore County Elementary School, elementary teacher, and Casey Miller, community school liaison, GCHS.
Make a motion to approve professional recommendation as stated by superintendent Manning.
Second. It's been properly moving to second to approve the professional section of the personnel agenda, as stated by Dr. Manning. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. All right, before we move on at this time, I'm going to recuse myself from the service and the extracurricular proportions due to having family members recommended in those sections. So, vice president, for sure, he can continue.
Let's continue, Brett.
Okay, under service, classroom aide, these are all three positions. First grade classroom aide, this is the House bill that passed at Gilmore County Elementary School. I'm going to recommend Tanya Tauber, Terry Stonaker, and Heidi Lindsay.
Go ahead.
Also moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Extracurricular.
All right, this is a kind of lengthy one. Ashley Barker, SAC coordinator, nine through twelve, GCHS. Ashley Barker, SAC coordinator, six through eight, GCHS. Amanda Poole, SAC coordinator, pre-K, K one, Gilmore County Elementary School. Crystal Smith, SAC coordinator, second, third grade, Gilmore County Elementary School. Amber Frazier, SAC coordinator, fourth, fifth grade, Gilmore County Elementary School. McKinley Buckley, mentor teacher, social studies, GCHS. Tamara Moore, mentor teacher, special education, GCHS. Nita Roberts, counselor, itinerary at Gilmore County Schools. Crystal Conrad, after-school tutor, GCHS. Ronnie Faesmeyer, after-school tutor, GCHS. Rebecca Chesser, mathematics tutor, Gilmore County Elementary School. Leslie Campbell, literacy tutor, Gilmore County Elementary School. Raven Friend, literacy tutor, Gilmore County Elementary School. Jacob Persinger, healthy choices tutor, Gilmore County Elementary School. Sherri West, program coordinator, Gilmore County Elementary School. Lori McCord, after-school cook, Gilmore County Elementary School. Karen Ferguson, auxiliary varsity basketball coach. Donald Hess, resignation summer custodian, effective seven, nine twenty-three. Austin Ratliff, resignation elementary basketball coach, effective seven, thirty-one twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve extracurricular personnel recommendations as stated.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
This is last year's, the first one. I don't want you to get these confused. I want you to get a copy of last year's and this year's board self appraisal. And then I'm going to send a copy of this year's. And you'll be able to see, the data's gotten much stronger this year. I'll send a copy of that down. And then, I have our.
Yes.
I knew it.
I am.
Thanks, man, I appreciate it.
I don't have all the answers.
We appreciate it, man.
It's only, I mean, I'm being honest.
Okay.
Communicate the county's mission. Yeah, I mean, I remember being, having some input in that.
Okay, so, I felt pretty good about where the data stood. You can see that there was some disagreement. And I'm not going to dwell on last year's. But there were several where there was disagree and strongly disagree several members across different, different pieces of the self appraisal tool. There was, like, for example, our board has specific measure of goals that frequently monitors progress towards meeting them and makes changes as needed. There was four that disagreed with that question alone. I was very happy with our data results. And I'm going to go through those data results. I can communicate the county's mission. Eighty percent, the county's mission is empower, inspire, engage. Eighty percent of the board can communicate there. I believe in learning for all, whatever it takes. Again, eighty percent of the board is in agreement. I make decisions as a board member based on the established mission of our county. Again, eighty percent strongly agree. Board members share a commitment to the county's mission. Sixty percent strongly agree, forty percent agree. Our board meetings include meaningful discussions about county goals and means of. And everybody agreed on that one. Our board expects central office staff to be committed to all students obtaining mastery. Hundred percent agree. My commitment as a board member impacts my actions and my expectations for students. Eighty percent agree. Twenty percent, eighty percent strongly agree, twenty percent agree. Our board evaluates the superintendent based off goals and expectations. Hundred percent strongly agree. Our board provides feedback to the superintendent when appropriate. Sixty percent agreed and forty, or strongly agreed and forty percent agreed. Our board sets clear expectations for performance. Hundred percent strongly agrees. As a board member, have the necessary information to make decisions. Sixty percent strongly agree and forty percent agree. Student performance and well-being can be measured effectively. Sixty percent strongly agree, forty percent agree. Our board engages in frequent, meaningful conversation about improving student. Eighty percent agree, twenty, or strongly agree and twenty percent agree. Our board has specific measurable goals, frequently monitors progress towards meeting them. Hundred percent strongly agree. Our board operates effectively as a policymaking body. Hundred percent strongly agrees. Decisions and action of the board are grounded in state and local policy. And that is eighty percent strongly agree and twenty percent agree. All potential county-wide issues are referred to the superintendent for management. Sixty percent strongly agree and forty percent agree. Our board has established a schedule for reviewing policy. Hundred percent agrees. Our board behaves, behaviors aligned with established norms and operating procedures. Hundred percent strongly agree. Our board allows the expect, and expects a superintendent to serve as a chief executive officer. Hundred percent strongly agrees. The relationship between the board and the superintendent is one of mutual respect. Eighty percent strongly agree, twenty percent agree. The authority of the board is a, is as a corporate body and not as an individual member. Hundred percent strongly agree. Our board goals are established and communicated to all stakeholders. Sixty percent strongly agree, forty percent agree. Our board has established process for communicating information to the public. Eighty percent strongly agree, twenty percent agree. Our board meetings effectively allow time for both board business and input. Hundred percent strongly agree. Our board procedures allow for public comments are fair, clear, consistent. Hundred percent strongly agree. Our board members attend school, district, and community. Our board members attend school, district, and community events throughout the year, hundred percent strongly agree. When speaking publicly regarding the county's issues, board members align their statements. Sixty percent agree, forty percent, or strongly agree, forty percent agree. Our board communicates with government leaders, local, state, and national on issues. Eighty percent strongly agrees, twenty percent agrees. And that's all of it. So, in every question, there was either everybody strongly agreed or agreed. There wasn't one area that I felt was a standout. The one area that I thought that we could, there's some, and I tried to find some improvement The one area, and I think Project Connect is going to help with this, but messaging, our board can, when speaking publicly regarding a county issue, board members align their statements with board official position, with the board's official position on an issue. That's one, that's one area to improve on, creating official positions on how we want to present things and stand out. And then focusing on connecting with Project Connect and get those statements out there. There was a couple little things like that, but I gave you the data to compare, and I'm not going to go back to the, to the old data, because I think if you compare it, you'll see there's, it's, it's a lot, it's good. I think that you're much more satisfied than what was, what was going on in the past. So, if, you know, if there's anything that I need to change, but I want to be digging into a few of those little things that I saw that could be problem areas, and then, you know, maybe I can get that one holdout there that says agrees, maybe I can get them swayed over next year.
Oh, if we were all below, they wouldn't even take us serious.
That's probably true. So, but I will, here's the game plan for this. I'll take this, there's going to be a PDF I want to share with you guys first, and I email this to Stacy Murrell, Dr. Murrell, and it, our task is complete.
Okay.
I know, next time it's the sun.
Did not do the emails, don't do it.
No, it's, it'll be, I will email that probably tomorrow. It'll be, it'll be all ready to go. I just wanted to present it to you guys before I sent that on.
Right, so we'll move into the second round, hand it up, update.
Just a few, a few updates. Still filling some positions, as you can see, we've got a lot of positions on there. We, I had the, the session with the house leaders, Chris Tony, Morgan Miller, and Delicate Statler, about House Bill thirty, thirty-five. We tried to get feedback, we talked about the aid positions, and we talked about I-ready, already having a dyslexia and screener on it. You know, there was a lot of talk about the science of reading continuing. Dr. Sacks from Campbell County kind of shared his information about the data behind the science of reading, and, you know, there was some talk about addressing professional development requirements, because we've gotten to the point where we have an extreme amount of professional development requirements from teachers again. So, just as an update, there was some real talk. One of them was extending the teacher contract, which I thought was an interesting topic. The other one was reducing the number of days students would have to go to school, so they'd go one seventy-five, which would give teachers another five days.
What was your thought about that?
So, they'd have to do remote learning or something like that, so. The only thing that I could see was, that I had, that I had a concern with, we didn't used to have the PL days built in. It seemed like when we got the PL days built in, the requirements for, for training became even more ramped up. So, those five days got taken. I'm afraid that, you know, we could add five more days and we'd fill that up with training as well. So, my suggestion, and I will share this with WBASA, is to allow the teachers to have the time with the extra to professional learn together, and that would be, that I, that's what I think that they would need and prefer, is to have the extra time to do things like work on their curriculum. Right now, we have, when we do professional development, we have so many required, we got, see, we got, we got all of our state requirements, we got house, I think where they said twenty hours, it was twenty hours of watching and completing state requirements, ten to twenty hours worth of state requirements. Then we got all of our county requirements and things that we need to do, codes of conduct and CPI and first aid, and so it's a lot of training, and it takes up the time for them to work in team, in groups. So, that was an interesting conversation. We have just, we've been getting ready for our beginning of the year packet. We will be doing a beginning of the year kickoff at the beginning of the year, and I don't know about next week, but within the next two weeks, probably the next Friday, we should have all of our stuff solidified for the entire year, and you'll start getting your weekly updates and back out to where, you know, where everything's happening, weekly plans and all that. Moving into school.
Awesome. Moving then to board member comments, any...
I got one that I, that I will reverse.
Don't matter. The WBU, Gilmer County Extension Service, there is an opportunity for kids to get with Jamie at the extension office to go to the state fair. They're taking a van or bus or something down there with the kids. And they have a Grow This West Virginia Garden Challenge, which has provided each WBU extension office with the supply of grow bags to distribute, so people can stop in and get their grow August fifteenth is when they're going to the fair, loading up a van. So, let Jamie know if you're interested.
I have a close friend contact me because being the senior board, and there is a program started in the state, it falls under character education curriculum, and it's called First Tee Program, like tee is a golf tee, and it uses golf in a civility traits, or hold on, it uses golf in the physical, in a physical education setting as a vehicle for teaching those concepts, and I don't know, it does a bunch of stuff, but it's called First Tee Time, and I think somebody's going to be reaching out to you there for, do you want to have it? Have they already?
No.
I don't think so. Yeah, they're going to give us some money, but it's to get kids like in the sport of golf.
Well, that's cool.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Like buy the equipment and stuff like that.
Anyone else? They have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, so they're probably moving to second to adjourn. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any motion carries?
We went to the session last week, I saw that one, I saw.
Where are pictures?
Did you see?